Good evening. This is the May 2, 2019, meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're meeting in Town Council Chambers. It is now 7:02 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Analyst, please introduce yourself, starting on my right.
Ryan Condon, alternate.
The Annabrozy Commissioner.
William Porter, Chairman.
Paul Leesey, Secretary.
Michael Riley, Vice Chairman.
Will Agresta, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Scott Schatz,柳树种地工程师.
Thank you. And Ryan sheeted tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Were you at the last meeting?
Yeah.
organizational administrative matters. Nothing. General public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to an open application or public hearing? Seeing none. Item number five, general appointments. We have none. Public hearings. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Rules and procedures of a hearing. Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comments will be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the Chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the Chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. Commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion, such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The Chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. First up is item number six, S U B 2019-01, file number 1264C, 104 Elm Street, Assessor Map 16, Lot 26, Residential and Climbing District 1, resubdivision application proposing a three lot, single-family residential subdivision, Connecticut Houses LLC. Here are Paul Dew, member, owner, applicant. And this is reconvened from March 21, 2019. Will, what do we have for new exhibits?
Exhibit 17, updated A R T comments, engineer. Exhibit 18, updated K N Z comments. And exhibit 18, bonus of the form from town area. That's it.
Okay. For the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is David Bjorkland. I'm president of Spat Bjorkland Associates. We have offices here in Monroe, and I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. It was my understanding that I couldn't locate the C D that we submitted with the revised plans. That was the call we got from Laura. I don't know if you want to...
Do you have a stick?
Pardon?
Did you bring your stick?
Yeah, I've got...
Yeah, we can just... Let me... I mean, I don't know if she found it. She doesn't say anything to me.
Yeah, I just see it's dated 3/21. These are all dated February.
There's a 3/12.
There's a 3/12. But that's me. That's not you.
Yeah, no, that...
All right, well, you can do yours.
Well, let me start, because there's several outstanding items here, and I don't think some of them can be resolved this evening. I think it's going to take more time. Just so that the commission knows, one of the... I think one of the bigger issues that we discussed back in March was the location of the neighbor's septic system. We thought the neighbor's septic system was on our property, and that was... We went out... The neighbor led us onto the property. We were able to determine that the septic system was on our property, and so what we have done is we've submitted a revised set of plans where we have moved the lot lines in a southerly direction, and it's noted that we will be deeding that little strip of property to the neighbor, so he will now own his septic system. So that's one issue that has been resolved in the revised plans. Another outstanding item that was open was open space, and we are requesting to the commission that we do fee in lieu of open space. I think Will Agresta's review letter summed up the open space situation quite nicely. There is no adjacent open space that we could combine with on this property, and because of the size of the property, the piece of property that we would be dedicating, even at 15 percent of six acres, would not be particularly significant. So based upon that, we're requesting that we do fee in lieu of... We need to have a determination from the commission that they are in agreement with that, so then we can move on to select and mutually agree upon an appraiser, and then we've got to proceed and get the appraisal done and get that back in front of the commission before we can close up that part of the file. And the other outstanding item was the excavation permit, which we are in the process of putting together and filing with the commission. So there are a couple of items that I don't think...
Regarding the excavation permit, I scoured the regulations last night trying to find a way or see if it was possible to work the excavation work into the subdivision permit, and unfortunately, there's nothing in the current regulation that provides an exemption for the excavation permit. But we do have the ability to alter the requirements of the permit, and after discussing the plan set that you currently have is adequate for the excavation permit. So it's basically pretty much just an application submission. Will, you said maybe a slight narrative might be required?
Yeah, a slight narrative, summarizing.
But as far as the... What is required, you know, for technical documents? The documents you've already prepared for the subdivision are adequate.
Okay. I appreciate that. That should simplify. You know, just as a little history to that regulation. That was developed in '75 after Whitney Farms was... Over 125 acres was mined, and they finally got Franklin Wrens into court. That was the commission's reaction to it. Hardly what we're dealing with on this application here, so it was a little different situation. But I appreciate that. The application is already all filled out, so we will get that in in the next couple of days.
Just a point of information. The Inland Wetlands Commission approved regulated activity and referral for the commission, so they handled both at the same time, so they're good to go.
So the other item that I think is left open and needs to be left open is the open space, the fee in lieu of... And I don't know if that takes a formal vote of the commission in a motion that we pursue the fee in lieu of, and then I'll move on to the selection of the appraiser.
Will, what's the procedure for that?
Well, you would do that as part of the approval, so unless the commission has a great consensus of not going in that direction, I mean, you wouldn't go down and announce.
Does everyone understand the concept here, the fee in lieu of, and the fact that there's no excess land in this subdivision? They're requesting to pay a fee in place of it. Does anyone have any particular problem with that?
No.
I don't see that being an issue.
So in the contents of the regulations, we're supposed to mutually agree upon an appraiser?
I see that you submitted information...
Right. We had submitted the Principi group. Rich Principi has been a resident of Monroe for as long as I've known. I've been working with Rich since the early 1980s. It was my feeling, if we're going to be doing these types of appraisals, let's keep it local. And I've talked to Rich. He's done this type of work before, and I...
Will, is the consensus of the commission adequate for that?
Yeah, and I also had an opportunity to talk with the town assessor in regards to the Principi group, and although the assessor didn't have extensive direct knowledge of them, he knows that someone in his staff had very... A lot of extensive experience with them and found them very highly good, so that I think is a good selection perhaps. But I would say that when we get down to getting the appraisal, then obviously we also give that to the assessor for him to give us some understanding, since he's the one that he has to assess the property, so he can give us input when we get the credit. So consensus at this time is fine.
Everybody good with that appraiser?
Yes.
Okay.
Beyond that, I don't know if the commission wants to get into the technical aspects of the staff review tonight, or do we want to put that off until we've got these other items straightened out? I see a lot of them as just housekeeping issues.
It might be beneficial to take a few minutes just to run through them, because if you come back and we go through them and there's something else...
Sure.
We'll try to get it all done at once.
We're all here, so... Looking at Scott's review, again, the asphalt apron that's located on Elm Street in the southerly portion of the property, again, it's our position, we don't want to remove that, especially seeing as we are going to be doing excavation work in that rear corner of the property. There already is an old farm road that leads down there. I think it's beneficial to leave that in place, both now and in the future. It's the primary access to the rear of the property. You can't access the property from the north side of the house because there's a retaining wall there.
Didn't you tell us at the last meeting that that apron was installed by the state when they did the Elm Street reconstruction?
That's correct. Right. The state rebuilt Elm Street in the late 70s, and I believe that...
What do you think about the asphalt apron?
Yeah, we'd leave it.
Leave it.
With regards to the guardrail, Scott, it's my understanding you and Nick had a conversation on that, and we're in agreement on how to treat the guardrail.
Yeah.
The return. The sightline from Lot 1 looking forward, the shoulder of the road there, which I believe is your concern, Scott, that's a mowed front lawn. Again, I live right around the corner from this and have lived around the corner from it, and, you know, that shoulder is mowed, has been mowed continually for 20 years at least, and so I don't see that the sightline at that point is an issue.
Well, my issue there is, as a rule of thumb, whenever a new sightline crosses over an area that's not paved, the standard's called for a minimum clearance in the sightline of your... Where your eye is looking in the ground, a minimum clearance of six inches. This has the minimum clearance of six inches, but you're supposed to use professional judgment in determining the sightline clearance, and it's my opinion, and I've always been advising, that if it leaves the pavement and it's across a lawn area, grass or a wooded area, a non-solid surface, I look for 18 inches, because if someone isn't cutting their lawn, or if they have a garden or whatever, it is possible that you lose that sightline in that area. Lose the component. So it's my opinion that to go to the 18 inches is something that is a little bit more realistic. It could go, you know, if it's a very... If it's right in front of a house, if the house is very close to the road, one could pretty much figure it on it being a well-maintained lawn, they're not going to have much room for that. But sometimes there's trees planted along the edge of the road, and there's things along the edge of the road where it's not exactly manicured down to an inch and a half.
Is your concern going north or south, or both?
There was concern for going... I think it was... There were two of them, and he addressed one, and the other one is very, very close. He's got it down to, I think it's about a foot now. It's because there's a curve there. Last I heard, I had talked to him yesterday, he was going to look at it and see if he could adjust it further. The other thing I was trying to do, I was suggesting that if you look at the yard areas over here where they're... It drops off rather quickly, and that's why they need the guiderail between these two driveways. I was trying to get it so that the town didn't have to maintain a guiderail there, because that's going to be, you know, an issue in the future. And what I was trying to suggest is if they filled a little bit on this lawn, they could bring the driveway up a little bit, and by doing that, you get the eyeball up a little higher, and the sightline works, and you eliminate the guiderail. But that costs money. It costs more money to fill in the front yard area. That's what I was trying to do. It's a little balancing act.
Because I have a picture looking north from the first lot.
Do you want to leave the guiderail? Is that your preference?
No, no, we're relocating the guiderail.
Yeah, they're going to push the guiderail back for...
Yeah, we're relocating it. We're pushing it back, to the... Right back to the property line.
So I was hoping that instead of spending the money on the guiderail and moving it back, that they would fill the area and eliminate the drop-off in what's called the clear zone, and if you eliminate that, you don't need a guiderail anymore. And, you know, I would imagine the people that live there would like that much better, but it's... I think it's a money issue.
It's a lot of...
No, it... No, when we looked at the guiderail versus the filling of the front yard, it's a buffer issue. I said this at the last hearing, a buffer issue from Elm Street. Elm Street, as we all know, is a very busy road. There is existing vegetation between the proposed houses and the... And the street, developed street line, and what we'd like to do is leave as many trees there as we can, so that the homeowners do have a buffer between that and the traffic. It... This is our proposal now. It could turn out that somebody buys Lot 1 and doesn't plant the trees, and we come back in and to eliminate the guiderail. But right now, in discussing it with our client, we'd like to leave as many trees as possible in front of Lots 1 and 2.
And you think that your sightline meets the requirements?
The... Because... Only because of that, the lawn from Lot 1 going north, there's a little pull-on parking area. Right in this area here, and in this whole shoulder, there is... There are some trees that are set back. As I said, I have a photo of this that are set back, but, you know, this is all lawn that's been maintained by this house as long as I can. And, you know, when I stand there and I look, you know, we do... You will be able to see.
Let me just move it through. Well, for what it's worth, that's my recommendation. I don't go by standing there and... I look at the profile that I'm giving, and that tells me in real terms what the actual clearance is. The sightline from this driveway cuts it... The problem area is right here. It's in the wide area, and it's right... This area right here where the sightline's crossing the curbing, I mean, from the main road. You don't have that planned yet, do you?
Yes. I don't... I'm sure, but that's changed since the original subdivision.
I think there's another one right next to it, just to...
That one has something in that slot.
Oh, yeah, just... Okay. You said you're coming back anyway, right? So I could work with Nick a little bit more and see if we could refine it.
Right. You know, the... We looked at, can we regrade the shoulder, and, you know, there's just nothing, you know?
It's that curve, I think, that's the problem.
Let's see the line first. Okay. It did get in here, but, you know, like I said, there's a...
Yeah, you only got one plan.
You know, but all I can say is the, you know, that this is lawn. Let's leave it that you and Nick from my office get together and see...
All right, we'll take another look at it.
And see if there is... If we can squeeze a few more inches out of it. The concern with the snep pole, that's been... You and Nick have resolved that. Soil and erosion, that I understand, has been resolved. Again, the street tree planting, it's our opinion, we don't think that's required. This is an existing town road. There are trees in front of... Scott, can you get me back to my...
No, my mouth isn't working.
It's not working again?
Yeah.
Stick goes the story.
Yeah, yeah, that's happened to wetlands, too.
Trying to get to the drawing board, the folder on the bottom of the tray. Two over... No.
Right there.
And then pick your stick, whatever yours is.
Yours is either E or...
That's it.
Or on the left.
Removable disc?
On the left, come, go down.
Right there.
Right there. It's one of those two.
In front of Lot 3, these are the existing trees that are in front of Lot 3, and going north from Lot 3, there's just... This is sideways, but this is indicative of... There's invasives and vines that are growing in.
Dave, what we've done in the past, and we discussed the last meeting, if you recall, is you've shown your plan as existing vegetation that's going to remain. Like, those trees, obviously, in Lot 3 are street trees, so those satisfy the street tree requirement. And then if you're going to keep a vegetated buffer in the front, your plan doesn't really show that. It just shows nothing, actually, other than the line at the street. So you're going to clear for the lawn to some extent, so you're going to sandwich it. So if you show a new tree line behind it on the front of the lawn and put a note, you know, vegetation to remain, and show the trees in front of Lot 3 to remain, that could satisfy the...
Okay.
The fact that you're not taking away the street trees.
I think the rest of these, Scott, are pretty much housekeeping. The survey, you know, that revision has already taken place. Will, moving on to your comments.
Three and four, Dave, are things that are housekeeping that you have a real question...
Yeah, I was just going to say, I've, you know, we didn't get... I didn't get these till I got back to the office late, but I just scribbled in, okay, The plan and profile for Lot 3 will provide that, more than enough site distance.
And I know you talked about the exclamation, Phil, but there was a couple of comments related to that. One is just a name change, but with the Wetlands plans, they're day for both Wetlands and K N Z. So if you could collate those, so the Wetlands sheet falls in a place where it belongs.
That's not a problem.
So they're together, so it's clear what those are.
Yeah, I don't... I think these are all pretty minor. I think the next, get the excavation permit in and get an appraisal back to the commission. Unless any of the members of the commission have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No, but I think the sightline issue is important, because, you know, you may have people that, you know, maintain their lawn now, but sell the house, you don't know what you'll get in the future, so I think that's important.
Can you raise the drive by now?
We've already done that. We've already tinkered with that. We can only come off the road at a certain grade, so it's...
Dave, can you talk timing a little bit? Because you have to submit the excavation permit, technically that has a hearing, although we're in a hearing. I didn't notice that as part of the hearing, so I have to throw in another notice into the newspaper. So you said you're going to have that, like, you said, tomorrow?
I believe that'll be something, you know. I've been told the application's been filled out. I haven't had a chance to review it yet, but I would think that...
Okay, so as soon as you can get that in, then I can get that additional notice in. Is there any council that has a time crunch? The rest seems pretty simple, the appraisal.
Yeah, and I have no idea. I have... I'll retain Rich in the morning, but...
Why don't you just give the commission an extension to the next meeting? Or maybe it should be a month now, because the next meeting, you never get the notice in.
I doubt the next meeting.
Yeah, I can't get the notice in. So do it for a month, a meeting in June.
The first year was...
In June. In June, and if, for whatever reason we don't make that, we can deal with that.
Okay, that'll be a good thing to have, uh, Rich Principi aim for.
So if you could aim for May 29th.
Right.
That way it gets you in the Wednesday before the meeting.
Okay, we will see what we can do.
All right, well, this is a public hearing, so the commission, anybody else have any questions?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? So we'll continue this till June 6th.
Thank you very much.
Seven thirty-three P M. Item number seven, S U B two thousand nineteen dash oh-two, file number one-two-six-six-C, by Bridge Road, that's been postponed at the request of the applicant until the May sixteenth meeting. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice a public hearing to be held May second, two thousand nineteen, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, section eight dash seven D. A public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chambers, Seventh Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, May second, two thousand nineteen, at seven P M or soon thereafter concerning the following. R A A two thousand nineteen dash oh-three, file number one-zero-zero-four-E, zoning regulation text amendments, minor site plan. Planning and zoning commission proposed zoning regulations, text amendments, amending and establishing procedural and permit regulations pertaining to the review and approval of minor site plan approvals as delegated to administrative staff and related amendments. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. Okay, it's all yours, Rob.
Okay, exhibits, number one, draft zoning text amendment is proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exhibit two, regional planning referral notices. Exhibit three, uh, state statute referral to the water company and public health department for public watersheds. Exhibit four, adjacent municipality referral notices. Exhibit five, West Cog response to referral indicating, um, no regional impact. Exhibit six, Metro Cog Regional Plan Agency response to referral indicating, uh, no regional impact. Exhibit seven wasn't it, uh, exhibit six was the draft of Metro Cog, exhibit seven is their final. Exhibit eight, North Cog Valley Regional Plan Agency referral response indicating no regional impact. That is all for exhibits. This action is a zoning regulation text amendment that was developed, uh, by staff with the subcommittee and then with the full commission. The full commission, um, sent forth for this public hearing, file R A A two thousand nineteen oh-three, file one thousand four-E, to amend the zoning regulations with regards to site plan approval process, to incorporate and establish a, a process of minor site plans, which would be delegated to staff review and approval. There's a series of amendments that are bodied in this amendment, um, and I'm gonna, I'll go through each, each amendment one by one. Amendment number one would be amending the definition section, section two point two one. Um, it would be including a definition for standard site plan and minor site plan. And the difference basically being, um, the site, the standard site plan is the site plan that comes to the full commission, and the minor site plan is what's delegated for staff, um, review and approval. So those are the two definitions. Amendment two, um, would be to the site plan review process as embodied in section seven point one. There are multiple, um, text language amendments being done, the, and I'll summarize the, the majority of what's being done here. So within this section, the regulations would be updated to current practices with regards to how you handle site plans, um, things you look at and what's required. There would be the integration of the minor site plan, which is the delegation to staff of certain activities, which I'll get into, I'm just gonna summarize it and I'll go through individuals. There's clarification of the exempt activities, which don't require site plan approval at all. And then the main thing is the establishment of criteria and activities which are delegated to staff for review and approval. These are the items which you as a commissioner are delegate, will delegate to staff to review. And there are criteria as to, you know, what, what's included in that. And anything that's not in that list would, would fall to the standard site plan, which goes to the commission. There'd be other amendments that deal with distinguishing and clarification and update of the application submission standards and requirements for both standard and minor site plan, because they would have, you know, different requirements. It's not as, the requirements aren't as full for the site plan, the minor site plan in comparison to the, to the standard site plan. And lastly, in section seven point one and the amendment number two, there'd be the establishment of minor site plan application process and update standard application process, given the change of adding the staff delegation. So I'll go through these really brief within amendment two. Again, this is just adding some standard, in section A, some standard language about, you know, the purpose of site plan and what the, the overall goal is to achieve. Again, some word changes in B, which are bringing in play, um, the current language that really exists in our code. It's also making the distinction here at the end about the standard site plan and the, and the minor site plan as to who would be approving each of those. And making clarification to a process that exists as far as when a site plan comes in and is dealing with budding, multiple budding properties, but are developed, for instance, um, together. And just making some word changes that are more, uh, specific to the actual, um, process. They, they, they can be processed together, but each lot has to stand on its own from a zoning check, so we're making that clarification. I mean, that's already the truth, but that's a clarification. As we go down to G, um, again, word use is permanent. There's a difference between provisional certificate and a permanent certificate. Provisional is when you start a development that's approved, and you're building something, the permanent's at the end when it's done and it's implied with the plan. Seven point one point two is clarifying updating the exempt site plan matters. These are items that do not require site plan approval either the commission or from, from staff. And these are clarifications and updating related to current practice. The first is just clarifying that we're only talking in, not in A, things about houses on RF one, RF two, and RF three houses. It's just houses and the accessory structures associated with houses, like your swing site, your pool, your tennis court, that sort of stuff. B is currently there, under the current regulation, there is no exemption for agricultural uses. So this would add an exemptive for agricultural uses, with the exception of structures over five hundred square feet. So this is, uh, reducing the standards on agricultural uses. Item C, the words is coming out because the, it used to be, prior to a, a previous amendment, a use in, in districts that said lawfully previously existing houses. That came out of when we did the tables, because anything that lawfully existed, whether it's a house or anything else, is by matter of law is allowed to remain as a NACA formula. So that's just why we took, we were putting it out. In D, um, this is to clarify with regards to signage, that, you know, changes in signage are exempt from getting the approval as long as they're, um, within accord with what was already previously approved. So if someone changes a sign and they're changing what it says, they're changing somewhat what it looks, as long as it falls within whatever parameters were required originally, that would not require a site. Again, in G, we, this is language that's coming out, because when we did the other amendments with regards to the tables, this whole thing about use categories and stuff, that doesn't exist anymore, hasn't actually existed since two thousand thirteen. Okay, so in seven point one-three, this is where we're putting in the criteria for what would be delegated to staff under a minor site plan. So the first one would be changes in permitted principal uses and accessory uses excluding special exception permit uses. That still rests with the commission, 'cause that has a higher level of review and, and standards applied to it. And this is provided that they're within the existing building, have adequate septic disposal, water supply, off-street parking and loading, and then they can demonstrate that. And, um, they can make minor changes as listed in the other amendments, in the other criteria that I'm gonna go through. So B allows for, um, staff to approve a, a building addition to, um, the principal building or an accessory structure that doesn't exceed a footprint or gross floor greater than five hundred square feet and has a, a cum, doesn't exceed a cumulative ground surface of a thousand square feet. So if you remember, we've had things with tanks coming in and maybe some fences, some other things, some minor things that the commission has been approving, these are now being delegated to staff, so we can do it much, much quicker with, with applicants and get these minor things kind of done. But it also opens the door for some minor building expansion without having to come to the commission. So for instance, if someone wanted to put in a, you know, we've had someone talk about, they have a restaurant, they wanna put a, a, a thing in front of the door, so there's sort of a vestibule between the, the parking lot and the building for the winter weather. And those things have to come to the commission presently, so we can do something like that more quickly to accommodate, as long as it doesn't affect the overall circulation site. Similarly, things like landscaping, walls and fences, um, those, we can make modification to those, as long as they don't take away from what the overall site plan already requires. Additions, alterations to the actual building appearance, the roof and all that, as long as it's not changing the style and character of the building. So we're not gonna take a traditional colonial-looking building and make it modern with staff approval. That's something that still has to come to the commission. But if they stay within the, the, the character of the building, they can make some minor modifications. As you recall, you once had an application for an existing building where they took a flat roof, they put in a peaked roof, it, it was sort of hidden between two larger parts of the building. That was something that had to come to this commission. That's something we could've done very quickly if we had the authority on the delegation and it did. For all senses purposes, you really couldn't see the difference in the building in the end of the day. Changes to the parking lot, um, substantially within the existing paved limits. So we're not talking about expanding the park lot further out, we're talking about where maybe the parking lot can be better designed, better circulated, or better landscaped, or they wanna revamp, like perhaps maybe Village Square someday will come in and wanna redo their parking lot and put some green in there. We maybe, we can do that within the confines of the pavement area, um, as long as they don't diminish the parking spaces below what's required. Now, if they have more spaces than what's required, they can diminish that, but they have to maintain whatever is the minimum number that's otherwise required. It can affect substantially the traffic patterns, the site ingressing, because again, those are larger issues that the commission really should be weighing in on. And that they, they don't diminish the landscaping. The idea is to either, um, redo it or to expand upon it where possible. Another, um, thing delegated to staff would be subsurface improvements, which is, again, tanks and suchnot, and as long as that it doesn't result in increased density occupation, meaning they can't go build, you know, another whole full septic system and then increase the capacity, which then trickles to need a parking and need a, and dealing with traffic impacts. Those are things that really should be left to the commission. But if they're putting in, for instance, they have, um, an oil service and they wanna swap it out to, you know, propane, and they're burying it, and then in the end it's gonna look the same, that's something we can do with staff and that, you know, bother the time with the commission. And then minor alterations in the Spanish, to walkways, curbing, and other paved services. Time and time again, we get sometimes they wanna upgrade the walkway, they wanna add a little walkway, or they have to make ADA changes. We had this happen with the Bank of America, you know, they, they had to bring the ADA spaces up the deal, at the same time they had to fix their sidewalk. Again, in the end, you can't tell that it changed, other than it's newer. But these are simple things that staff can hand over without having to spend the time with the commission. The next section is the application requirements. As I said, this is to incorporate the site, the minor site plan requirements, so we were weaving in the minor site plan requirements and what needs to be done in relation to, as a, compared to the standard site plan application. So that's really all that this is doing. Same thing, this is just weaving in the minor site plan within the framework of the existing regulations. Okay, then we get to the section which, which is the process. This is the process for, the proposed process for a minor site plan. So what we're, what the regulation is proposing is that an applicant would, if they meet those criteria that we went through, they can submit a minor site plan application to staff, and the regulation is saying that staff will review that, and within one week of that official receipt of that application, they'll get either an approval or they'll get something that says what they need to, you know, revise or, or fix, or whatever issue might be there. If there is an issue, when they come back and resubmit that, again, the one week kicks in. So it's always a, a one-week window that staff has. It doesn't mean that it's gonna take a week. If it's a simple matter, it could be that day. But if it's a bigger issue, you know, it could take a few days or whatever's here or not, you know, that's, that's another thing. So we have to weave it in with that, but a week, which is a pretty brief period of time. This is talking about that the requirements are the same that are listed in this, in the code already, um, that staff can seek advisory view of the architectural review board if that is something that's part of it. That would require something that's, you know, a larger change to the, to the building perhaps, like for what happened with the, um, the bet on, uh, on Main Street, as opposed to some minor changes. So it's not, it's not, again, one, it's not mandatory, two, it's not likely to happen on, on most events. It also provides for that, should an issue come up that staff is uncomfortable with, they can refer to you as, to the full commission for some guidance, um, meaning that you can help answer a question or resolve if there's maybe a, a, a difference of interpretation of something between the applicant and staff. This gives the commission the ability to, to weigh in on that. And the commission may determine that it needs to come, it should come to them, or they'll be able to answer the question and set us all on, back on the bet. The last is that, um, we're not doing this in a vacuum, staff is gonna report to the commission on the activities in which it approves, so we, again, this is a check and balance, so we know that we're doing the right thing, and that the things that we're approving are what you've intended us for, approving versus things that should've come to you. And then this is just, this is the standard application process. We really haven't changed here, other than the fact that we weaved in either current practices and/or the fact that we had a minor site plan application. Amendment three is the existing waiver provisions of section seven point three-two. Essentially what this amendment will do, this is gonna incorporate the minor site plan application process into waiver provision, which is gonna give staff the ability to waive the application requirements similar that, that the commission has. For the most part, a lot of the standards, you know, are obviously designed for, uh, green development, and there's a lot of things. When you're doing the minor alterations that we're doing, a lot of those things aren't really gonna be pertinent, so there's, there's not gonna be a need for, for those to be on the plans. So that gives the staff the ability, as does the commission have for their, your process, to waive those requirements. Amendment number four. This is postapproval standards, section seven point four. Again, updating and clarification to current words and current processes, and to incorporate, again, the minor site plan process. This is talking about timing, when you need to get the zoning permit, the building permits, and this is all current and bringing it up to the way the current practices are. And the last one is adding in the minor site plan application. This is just, again, the green wording that we currently use in incorporating the minor site plan. Amendment five, approval expiration, section 7.5, same thing. Updating, clarifying current usage, current wording, and incorporating the minor site Which is what he is there, incorporating the minor site plan. With regards to timing, so a standard site plan application has a very long timeframe in which to be implemented because it's usually a bigger project. What this is incorporating is that staff is going to approve something, they're going to give it a six-month window, they're in the process for getting a building permit. So it's like, it's like, the idea is it's, it's something that's being done right away. It's not something that needs a big architectural design, it's not leading out to FOT approvals. There's no lead time on other things. But that things do happen. They may get hung up with something in building permits, so we can give six months extensions and just keep it going. This has been something that's been in the process of being written through the last couple of years. And part of that obviously was some research of other towns. There are other towns that, that do delegate to staff. There isn't a whole lot that we did find where we were doing that. And I would say that this is more robust than the ones we did find. So I think it's very open to many of the comments that the commission has received about improving economic development, streamlining processes and meaningful development. So I think everyone's done a lot of work over the time that took this out, the commission was subcommitting the staff. So I hope the commission moves forward and decides to approve this.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
I have two questions. So the staff makes a decision, obviously, if what's considered a minor site plan?
No, the regulations do.
Well, I mean. The staff interprets the regulations to determine.
Well, there's always interpretation to the regulations, but one of the things or hesitations I have always had with this was trying to be as clear as possible with what is being delegated to staff, because the last thing staff wants is to be having to interpret it to the level of yes or no. If we want it to be as clear as possible, obviously that's, to make it crystal clear is impossible, it's a regulation.
So is it one individual, or is it, you, or is it you and Scott?
Well, the way, well, it isn't Scott, but it, it falls within the planning and zoning administrator's position. But with that, we have the town planner, we have the Z E O, who really is the interpreter of the code, short of the zoning board of appeals. But when we have interpretation questions, we don't just do it by ourselves, you know. We're not sure, we talk at all about everybody in the, in the staff. And if we need to, we also reach out to Vin Marino, land use attorney. But again, these were written in a way that there shouldn't be interpretation. Again, that was my reservation with this is because I didn't want to get into a situation where, you know, we can, you know, where it could be viewed as being, you're being favored or whatever, you know.
Well, that's my concern.
We want it to be as clear as possible.
So it's going to be obvious, you're saying?
Yeah, well, we can look at the criteria.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
So that was the intent. And the other thing too is that, that's another reason why it was important to have the reporting component.
Well, that was my next question.
To come back to the commission with what we're doing so that the commission can see how.
But obviously, that's after the fact.
Well, it's after the fact, it's checked and balanced. So, I mean, any regulation, you only learn to implementation of it. And, you know, you can change the regulation anytime you want. So you can pull it back, you can change it if something turns out to be unclear.
Well, we can override it.
You would have to amend the code to fix it or whatever, but you also can give direction to staff as to what the intent, what the legislative intent was.
I was just wondering, maybe it's not possible, if there's a way for the commission to have some sort of input on that, maybe it's just not possible.
Well, the idea was to.
The idea is to get it away from the commission, shows things and into the staff.
I, I get that, but just, yeah, so I realize.
So what I would, again, envision is with the reporting factor is we're reporting, you know, we have two meetings a month. So we'd be reporting what activities we would be doing under this. That gives the commission the ability to see, is it working? And is it the things that you envisioned it to be? And if it isn't, you're going to give us guidance that, oh, no, that shouldn't have been like that, and so we'll have some understanding of the interpretation if there was an interpretation issue. And two, if something isn't working, you may have to adjust something in the code. And if, if, if it, if through working it, you find that there, it could be added that way too, that more things go to the staff. So again, everything in a regulation is a work in progress, so it's only as good as the implementation and.
Well, I was wondering, you're saying you're going to turn around a decision in a week?
In some instances, it might be that day.
All right, well, yeah, so normally it's, you know, if it's a standard application.
I see, that's why we've developed a minor application.
No, I understand.
If someone wants to put a generator in their backyard, we don't want them to come to the commission for a site plan approval to put a generator in their backyard.
Understood. And one of the reasons is obviously I want them to go through the effort of doing all that, but it's also reducing the time required to get that approval.
Right.
Right? So there's a lot of benefits to the applicant. I'm just wondering if, you know, if it's something that you report to the, you report to the commission that meets twice a month, so that theoretically, the decision could be.
Well, no, because they would be reporting on what action they took. So it would be, it would be more.
I guess what I'm saying, I guess the, right, well, I guess I'm saying.
But then the commission would say, well, you know what, in the future, if you get an application like that, we think that should come to us.
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking at or considering is that, that we would basically approve their decision. And I know it's, you know, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to see the report anyway.
We're going to see.
And we could comment on, I guess, on the report. We will do anyway.
Right.
So I'm saying to do it, instead of doing it after the fact, to put it as part of the process.
Well, that, that kind of negates this whole.
Well, not really.
Enter, this whole exercise is getting it away from the commission.
Well, yeah, we're seeing it anyway.
To alleviate applications.
Understand. If we're going to see it anyway, we're going to make a decision, or we're going to.
We're not going to make a decision.
We're going to comment on it.
We will have the ability to comment on it, but not, not change it after the fact.
But basically, I think if we don't see that it's working the way that the commission thought that it was going to work, then we'll change it. But we don't know until we put it in place and how it's.
It's pretty clearly defined what staff can approve as a minor application.
That's some of my thoughts.
Well, in a sense, you are approving it. You're approving it with putting it in the code the way it is, with saying, these things are delegated to staff because we've determined they're at a level that we don't need to zink them. So you've, you're tacitly approving those things by virtue of the regs.
Not, not a particular specific application.
Well, if the specific application meets those criteria, you're saying that's of a minor nature that you don't need to zink.
Yeah.
And you've tacitly approved them now.
We, we do that at Welling's, it's called an agent approval, and it's been working very well. They, they kind of set up guidelines on what my parameters are, and as an agent, I process administratively the applications to me as much quicker, process that. And then I report to the commission at the meeting, oh, I approved this, I, you know, we should just put it down. They can weigh in if anything, you know, jumps out at them, kind of thing. But it's worked well.
Yeah, I think we should go forward. All right, do you have any questions right now? Let's see if anyone from the public has any comments, anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? Back to you.
So noted, there is no comments, there was no written comments received either. As I summarized before, the municipal planning agency referrals all came back with a no-regional impact response. We did not receive any responses from the adjacent municipalities and the amount of time that's allotted under statutes has passed, so that's deemed they have no comment. We also did not receive any comment from Aquarian Water Company or from the public, state public health department, and that timeframe has also lapsed, so therefore that's taken as no comment. So unless you have any further questions, you may determine whether you want to close this hearing and then appropriately take appropriate action.
Close.
Okay, session closed. Okay, next up, item number nine, site development plan and permit amendment modifications. We have none. Item 10, time extensions, none. Item 11, bond releases or reductions, none. Item number 12, pending meeting minutes, April 18th, 2019. Quarter Leacy, Ambrosi, and Condon present at that meeting. Do you all intend a motion?
I'll make a motion to fill the meeting minutes of April 18th, 2019.
Second.
Nice draft.
Second.
Any comments?
No.
Paul Roll?
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Quarter, yes. Leacy, yes. Riley abstaining. Abstaining? All right, moving on. Item number 13, pending application deliberations and determinations. First up, SEP 2018-12, file number 1607A, 575 Monroe Turnpike. If you remember, this is for daycare, that 575 Monroe Turnpike. Some of the issues that were brought up during the public hearing, we questioned whether or not a sidewalk was required, the commission, the general consensus was no sidewalk. There were some comments about additional landscaping. This is all going from P and Z administrator comments. There were some additional plan things that the applicant agreed to. Had to make some modifications on the planting sizes to meet regulations. The applicant was going to work with staff to modify the size of the dumpster and the dumpster enclosure and its location on the site. The applicant was going to work with staff to possibly relocate the light pole in the parking lot to get it out of the setback. Commission determined that no future loading zone was required. And then there were some housekeeping issues with notes and such on the plan. What else does anybody have about this?
I think they were very cooperative, did everything they wanted. I think we pretty much covered everything that we wanted, what's needed in this town.
Well, the issues that, the issues that were outstanding, they agreed to work with staff to remedy. Anything else? Will, do you have any other?
I listened to the tape on this one because I missed last one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, for the record, Michael, listen to the tape for the last meeting.
I don't remember if the specific amount was, but with the waiver of the sidewalk, the bond recommendation was 2,600.
Okay.
The balance of that, of the property was in the upper review area, so the bond for in the one was 11,000.
Okay, and that covered pretty much everything in the back. Will, did you have any other notes on this?
No, you went through them.
What do we think?
A motion of approval, paradigm approval?
Paradigm approval. Okay, next up, we have RAA 2019-04, file number 1005E, zoning regulation text amendments, alcohol service eligibility. Few notes and comments on this one. Wanted to be on the record that even though this is a commission-proposed amendment, this was a result of some requests from various entities in the community concerning these regulations. The commission received a request from the First Selectmen's Business and Industry Advisory Council, namely the Economic Development Commission and the Chamber of Commerce, asked us to look at the regulations concerning alcohol service in restaurants. We, our current regulation requires restaurants to have 50 seats in order to serve alcohol, and they asked us to review that and see if we could possibly amend that because it was, it was hurting some of the local smaller restaurants not being able to have alcohol service. The second major component of this amendment has to do with the 1,500-foot separation distance. This issue was initially raised by the owner of a local package store who was considering a second location, and that second location did not meet our current setback regulations. So this owner requested us to take a look at possibly amending the 1,500-foot requirement. Commission looked into this, the subcommittee looked into it, and as near as we could tell, the 1,500-foot requirement that was in the town zoning regulations was a copycat of the state regulation from back in prohibition era probably. The state used to have that requirement, the state has subsequently eliminated that from the state regulations, but it carried over in our town as well as some other neighboring towns have that requirement. But the state of Connecticut does not have any separation distance required for package stores, and in doing a legislative review, there are no states in the United States that have a separation distance between package stores. There are 11 states that require a separation between package stores in places such as churches or schools or daycare centers. But Connecticut does not have any specific separation distances in their regulations. In some of the information that was presented during the public hearing, we were given a copy of the American Law of Zoning, fifth edition, dated 2010. And in a section entitled "The Legitimate Objectives of Zoning," section 728, zoning to regulate competition. The zoning-enabling statutes of several states do not expressly authorize the enactment of zoning ordinances for the purpose of controlling competition. In general, judicial reaction to zoning regulations mainly intended to restrict competition has been unfavorable. And they footnote a couple of court cases. First one, where gasoline stations are permitted subject to the granting of a special permit. The fact that an additional station will have an adverse economic effect on existing stations is not relevant, is not a relevant consideration. This was West Whiteland Township versus the Sun Oil Company. Second one, it stated, "An ordinance forbidding construction of a gasoline filling station within 200 feet of a lot line of any plot on which there was located a gasoline filling station was discriminatory, unreasonable, and unwarranted, and violated the constitutional rights of the Leacy who sought to construct a filling station within 200 feet of another filling station." Mobile Oil Corp versus the Board of Adjustment of Town Newport. That section in the American Law of Zoning goes on to say, "Where the courts have concluded that the main purpose of a zoning ordinance or decision is to regulate or restrict business competition, they have disapproved." competition, they have disapproved. Such regulation is not to be a proper purpose of zoning." And they footnote, "Where the sole purpose of a zoning regulation is to restrict competition, the provision is unconstitutional." Wyatt v. the City of Pensacola. And they cite, they cite about ten other court cases, basically stating the same thing, that zoning laws cannot restrict retail businesses. Further on, they state, "That regulation of competition is not an objective within the zoning power, has been affirmed in cases dealing with the standing of a person whose business is competitively harmed by a zoning amendment or a zoning decision by the administrative board. A person may challenge the validity of a zoning ordinance only if he has some personal and special interest in the outcome of such an action. He must be affected in some way other than in his capacity as a resident and taxpayer of the municipality. A person may seek review of an administrative decision in most jurisdictions only if he is a person aggrieved. It has been held that if a litigant's sole interest in the competitive effect of a ruling, he is not a person aggrieved. A Connecticut court said, "If the sole basis of the plaintiff's grievance was that the proposed new package store business would create competition, he would not qualify as an aggrieved person." And this is from a Connecticut court case, Zuckerman versus the Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals to Town of Stratford. And basically, another section goes on to say, "As noted and discussed in the previous section, control of competition is not regarded as a legitimate purpose of zoning." So again, going through the reason why our town has a fifteen hundred foot separating distance between package stores and has no other such restriction on any other retail use, I personally cannot come up with a reasonable answer to why we have that separating distance, other than to decrease competition, and as I cited in numerous court cases, that's illegal. So... There's one other portion of this amendment that I would like to bring to light, and that's, we had removed cafes and taverns as permitted uses in our zoning charge. But it's come to our attention that two existing restaurants in town have cafe licenses, so we are going to put cafes back in as a permitted use with some modifications to the, the amended section.
They suggested to, to bring back cafe into the mix because of existing businesses.
Right, we don't want to create a non-conforming business.
So in doing so, the whole spirit of this was that we're taking out the seating from the existing language and leaving in the language about being seated at tables. So if you're going to bring back cafe, which is fine, because you're proposing to eliminate it, you're making it less advantageous in that sense, that you should normalize the definition of cafe in the language relative to location of sale limited, where you approve the, and name the specific uses, namely on-premise cater and the full-service restaurant, now putting back cafe. Keep the spirit of what it was, which is the having the seating, the full-service seating and the kitchen component, because cafes don't necessarily need that. They just have to offer some food. But both the cafe licenses that we have are really bona fide restaurants, so that would, doesn't change them. They would be fine, they would meet this language, and the language is about offering hot meals and that the persons be seated at tables and served by persons employed by the staff, which is what we were proposing this amendment to basically do by eliminating the seating.
Right.
So we're normalizing it for all three, they're all meeting that same criteria, and again, the existing facilities already meet those components, so it does not make them non-conforming.
All right, so we would be adding cafes back in, and by definition, they would be under the same category as like a full-service restaurant.
And that's the consensus of the convention?
This is, this is deliberation, so I would like everybody to kind of weigh in on...
What are the, what are the two cafes in town?
And before I go further, Mike, did you, you also listened to the tape on this one, correct?
The two existing cafe licenses are Republic House and...
Those was two, as I can't...
Those are cafe licenses, just a... They also have restaurant licenses too, right?
Now, they have cafe for their liquor.
For their liquor, they have cafe.
For their liquor license, they apparently have a cafe license. The difference between a cafe and a restaurant is, that's like in, they say, statues. A cafe does not have to serve hot meals. It has to provide some level of food available.
Sandwiches or like...
Sandwiches, soup, pretzels, bagels. And they have a minimum twenty seats under state statutes. The restaurant, I think, is maybe the same, and it has to have a minimum of four square foot of a dining area of some sort. There's probably other differences as far as their cost, the permitting, the process they go through the state, but the difference in a restaurant, a restaurant is going to have a full-scale kitchen, have dining room, and they have to have certain separations and stuff like that.
Yeah, those two have that, yeah.
But those two are restaurants.
But in the future, what would the implication be if somebody came in and wanted to open a cafe with just...
They could open a cafe as long as they similarly provided hot meals and waitstaff, full service.
Okay, so cafes are included as long as they are...
As long as they meet our, require our definition of the cafe.
Gotcha. Okay, so cafe permit versus our definition of the cafe.
Right, so they could have a minor menu compared to, you know, your more traditional full-blown sit-down, full-course meal, as long as it's hot meal in the kitchen.
Yeah, okay.
Don't you miss?
Do we allow establishments that do not serve food to serve alcohol?
Well, that's what the tavern, tavern doesn't have to serve food at all, and we don't have any tavern license in town.
That's a tavern.
And that's what you had proposed to eliminate, as not being permitted. You couldn't just have a straight alcohol bar.
You can't.
You can have a bar in a restaurant, you just can't have a standalone bar that doesn't serve any food of any kind.
We can't.
You won't if you adopt this with...
That's part of the provision.
Yeah.
They can't even figure the tavern. Not in tavern, but anywhere.
Well, there's ones in Manhattan, but...
Yeah, I think one in Sheldon, yeah.
Okay, but we have, we have three amendments here, so I'd like everybody to weigh in on how they feel about the three amendments. In no particular order.
And the seating went from fifty down to...
We have no, we're proposing no seating requirement, just that it be a full-service, waitstaff type establishment.
There is a minimum seating requirement on the state statute for the licenses, and I think it's twenty.
So eliminating fifteen, so...
I just want anybody who has input to give us input. What would you want to do, you want to go through amendments one, two, and three? Amendment one, we define a grocery store. So we're all good with the groceries?
Yeah, right, yeah.
All right, amendment two. This has the component with the restaurants?
Yeah.
The seating, the seating, yeah.
We've eliminated the minimum number of seats, but we put it, it has to be an on-premise cater, full-service restaurant, or a cafe, and they, they all, by definition, are sit-down, waitstaff-type meal services.
So this could bring in places like some of the Italian restaurants in town, the pizza places in town, that tables, and bring it out to you.
As long as they have table service.
They don't have to come out to the count, up to the counter, they're coming in.
This would have, this would have allowed if this was in place, like get the Nestrano's, it would have allowed them.
But Last Drop Coffee Shop now, if they bring it out to your table?
The place that was Nestrano, um...
Brothers now.
I was in there a few weeks ago. They only have forty seats, so under our current regulation, they are not allowed to have alcohol.
Yeah, but no, so, I, I understand the ones that are like, what I'm talking about, you know, a place that has three seats, two tables and...
Places that are basically counter service are not...
Yeah, but you can still have some small, I mean...
Again, the state license is going to require it to be the minimum of twenty.
Okay, well, I'm thinking of some of it. There's some places in Newtown that are much smaller, though, they do pretty good, and they'll, they'll bring you a beer at your table if you're eating there, so I'm not complaining. I think it's a, I like the idea.
Well, are they serving them the meal and ordering the meal there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, just it's, it's letting smaller places potentially do this.
Right, that was the request, to let small places in.
So if something doesn't meet the guidelines of cafe, then what, what is it then, otherwise? If it's not a cafe?
Tavern?
Well, there are other, there are other food service uses that are defined in a code, like off-premise catering services, fast food restaurants, those will not be eligible for alcohol.
Deli, oh no, deli wouldn't.
No, deli wouldn't.
But on a grocery store, they could sell.
If it's a retail food store, that's selling, this is on-premise consumption.
On-premise consumption, got it.
Well, deli could have on-premise consumption, right?
All right, then it's twenty seats.
They wouldn't have alcohol.
They would need waitstaff, so they'd have to hire wait, waitstaff and then get...
They would go from what, that's in the retail food category, they would have to go from that to either cafe or restaurant cafeteria in order to get the alcohol. And that also changes their parking requirement, because the retail, if you recall, we made the retail food establishment a much lower parking requirement than a restaurant because of its...
What is the parking requirement? Is that going to affect, if we change the seats, is, are they going to be parked out of it?
No, it's not based on seating, it's based on, they're all based on square footage, but it was in recognition that these retail food establishments, like a deli, which, you know, don't have a lot of people that are sitting there.
Yeah.
So they're in, they're out, so, you know, like a gas station in some extent, they're in, they're out, so the same space is being multiply used over, it's not being taken over by people lingering at a table.
Well, back to, so Nestrano's, or which is brothers now, if we approve this, are they going to be good under the parking rule to still have enough to... Yeah, I guess, because they already are.
They already are.
Yeah, they already are.
They already are, right.
Full-service restaurant.
So it's not like seating's still there.
I'm good with it.
So we're all good with that. All right, then the next section here addresses the fifteen hundred foot separation distance. And what this proposed regulation is putting forth is that we have totally eliminated the separation distance. We still, however, the commission, under... Under item A, the commission shall find that the proximity of the premises to church, schools, or any places frequented by minors shall not be such as to constitute a hazard to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. So the, the commission still has final say over the opposed liquor store.
With the proximity of those in mind, so...
Well, to those or that would constitute a hazard to the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood.
Okay.
And that, and that, that could also, but does that also bring in traffic and stuff like that?
That's health, safety, and welfare, yeah.
Well, if you're also, if you, whether it's, yeah, well, traffic is a different issue because there is health, welfare with that, but traffic is an issue of every use that you look at. If a, if traffic cannot be accommodated, the impacts of traffic cannot be accommodated, they need to mitigate for that, whether it's an alcohol-related use or not an alcohol-related
And then in, in item C, which we're adding, says, "Any premises or establishment having an appropriate State of Connecticut license for the sale of alcoholic beverages of any type for consumption off the premises shall have its location determined appropriate by the commission." So we have section A and section C, which both give the commission the ability to review and approve or disapprove a location.
We're just eliminating that strict fifteen hundred foot requirement.
All right, so basically... I'm saying, I'm, 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 motor vehicle regulations, they involve stuff in here, like the schools, churches, theaters, playhouses, and other places, public gathering, everything like that. Is that the same as with the liquor store?
No.
Why not?
Because that's motor vehicle.
But what difference does that make?
I don't know.
Say it again?
On our motor vehicle certification, okay, we have a need there, under the State of Connecticut, we have schools, churches, theaters, playhouses, other places of public gathering, traffic addition, intersecting streets, width of the highway, effect on public travel. That doesn't apply to liquor store?
Well, that language, that...
State regulated anyway, so...
That language isn't there specifically, but those issues in the latter part, again, with the traffic, are true no matter what, because they're going to need a site plan approval at minimum, and those standards are all part of the site plan approval. So if somebody proposes a package store that's going to be, you know, ten thousand square feet and is going to generate all this traffic, the appropriateness of it to the adjacent uses and all that's one thing, the other, the traffic, you're going to be doing that regardless.
No, no.
If you remember that last application that came in for the old Goodwill store, that was a site plan approval.
Right.
And as part of the site plan approval process, all of those factors get, get weighed on.
This is basically...
My basic concern is that I don't want them all in one place, and I just don't really have seven licenses, but I'm saying, do you have some kind of control over that? And I have, I don't have an issue with, and I know the fifteen hundred foot thing is a old law, and I can't see any reason I'll put four hundred feet or fifteen hundred feet because I, I don't think that we have that right to control that. After what you read and everything that I looked into, in a way that I could, so I just want to make sure that we have some kind of control over...
So you're worried about clustering then?
Well, I mean, see, there's only seven licenses that are held in this town anyway, so I, I, right, there's only seven, right? And so I, I doubt that somebody would want to have it all on one side of the town anyway, but I'm just saying is that if it gets to be a concern, then, I mean, we do have something that we can control over.
We, we determine if the location is appropriate.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I mean, right.
But if we say no, they could construe it as to be a restriction on their right to operate.
It's also my understanding that some of that language is similar in the state statutes for the state liquor control division to also opine on whether the location is appropriate after you even say it's appropriate or not.
Right. I feel like removing the number, one thousand five hundred foot, just makes it so now somebody can come forth with an application that earlier would have looked at that and been like, oh, I can't even look at the site, but now they can come to the site and make an argument and show us, and then we decide, yes, this looks good, or no, this is a health hazard, this is too close to a daycare, or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, but it doesn't spell that out in here.
Well, it's, it's what we do every year.
Huh?
It doesn't spell it out for daycare.
Well, it says places frequented by minors, I mean, what, what other use is more frequently by minors?
Okay. Anybody else? Michael?
No, I was only concerned about clustering, but I don't think we really have the authority to say no, you can't have three liquor stores in a row, unless you have a legitimate reason.
Well, unless, unless there's a legitimate reason, um, we, we could say it, and we could, it could be appealed and...
Health Department.
Based on the, the, you know, the dozen or more cases of similar suits that were in this document from the American Zoning Journal, you wouldn't stand a very good chance of winning it.
So I'm good with it too.
But on the other hand, but on the other hand, if these stores were already established there, okay, and somebody wanted to come in and we denied it, then we wouldn't have a case on that because that store was already established there.
Not unless you had a legitimate... Not unless you had a legitimate reason for denying it.
Well, I'm saying because all of a sudden, all of a sudden a school moved in or something like that, or something happened, and we couldn't put that guy out of business, but we wouldn't allow another one, right?
Potentially.
Potentially do that, right?
We would have, we wouldn't have the ability to review any future application.
You're reviewing the facts as, you're reviewing the facts as they are presented at the time that you're presenting them.
Right.
So if things change...
Just change, that's what I'm saying, if something changes and that place is already established, there's nothing we can do about it.
No, no.
But if a new place wanted to come in and it didn't meet what we thought...
Was appropriate.
Appropriate, then we can work with that.
Right.
All right, that's, I'm good with that.
And then amendment number three just brings the section ten zoning chart up to date. What we've noted here is the cafe would go back to an SEP use, and the tavern would stay expelled.
Do we want to talk about C, back in six, seven point two at all?
I'm sorry?
We skipped over section C, where the premise over the establishment of grocery stores being allowed to sell, which changes since we've changed the definition, or we've defined grocery stores.
Well, we've defined, that was the purpose of this definition, we've defined...
Yeah, we define grocery stores.
What we ought to want is, every gas station that has a convenience store that sells chips and candy, to say that they're a grocery store.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're, we're saying that eighty percent of their, of their floor area has to be devoted to consumer, processed, prepackaged, or perishable food products, grocery products, not chips and snacks. So what do you think? Instruct Will to write up a draft approval, making the discussed changes about the cafe. All right, Leon is requested to take a five-minute recess, so take a recess.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we're back, eight forty-four PM. Next up, RAA two thousand nineteen dash oh-three, file number one zero zero four E, zoning regulation text amendments. This was the text amendment that we just had the public hearing on this evening. So, thoughts, comments?
It's a lot of work, we all put a lot of work into this.
Yeah. Yeah, this is actually, it's been about two years that we've been working on this on and off. And we, meaning Will.
Yeah, well, we and the subcommittee worked on it a little bit.
Well, the subcommittee worked on it, basically commenting on what Will has put together and how we want it adjusted and tweaked. So anyway.
Some people want it, looks like a good start.
Yes, I think this is, this is going to make a lot of things a lot easier for people with minor.
So everybody's good with it as presented? All right, so we'll instruct Will to do a draft approval.
Okay.
Next up, item number fourteen, regulation review amendment work session. We have no meeting scheduled at this time, but we will have one in the near future. Correspondents other received, we have nothing. Commission reports, chairman reports. We received the proposals for the P O C D from six different firms. We've shortlisted that down to three firms, and we will be interviewing them this coming Monday. Will, you have some?
Yeah, so obviously the regulatory subcommittee is going to be doing those interviews along with staff, so we think it's appropriate that everybody, you know, you're looking at things, you ultimately are going to make a decision as a commission, so it made sense that everyone gets some input into this process. So what I did is I created a spreadsheet which talks about the criteria, which are listed in the, in the P O C D R F P, and put a relative point system of one through six, you know, poor, less than satisfactory, three satisfactory, four adequate, five good, six exceeds expectation. So the idea is that everyone would look at the R F P proposals, which you have had for a while now, and you could, in a sense, grade based on your opinion on the different criteria, and the criteria are like, let me see, a type of, R F P response quality, the type of firm it is, the client base that they have, their past experience with Monroe, staffing assigned, experience with P O C Ds, overall experience, Connecticut experience, G I S in-house, local knowledge, R F P understanding, R F P scope clarity, public participation, what that they're bringing into the mix, schedule, cost, their fee structure, the competitiveness of their proposal, and the reasonableness of their proposal. And the other ones are references in jury impressions, but those obviously would be for the ones in jury duty. The idea is, as you read those proposals, you could look at them, give them some criteria that you feel that they are, give them a number, use space for specific comments that you might want to make. The idea, this, I can call this together for everybody, and that way we are more collective in getting some input on a different proposal, so you can have a better informed decision in the end. I'll give you each a copy, and I'll email it to you too, so.
Should we cut it down to these three?
Well, the, we had that discussion.
I must have missed it.
Yeah, you weren't here.
Well, I guess. Again, the specifics of the R F Ps and the things involved and the costs, all are supposed to be confidential until the time that you pick somebody, all right, so let's remember that. And that's fair for all the proposers. Did they get one?
Yep.
And again, I'll email it out. Well, that's a short, that's a shortlist, that doesn't mean the others are out, that's just where we're starting. If we don't, if the commission doesn't like, well, go back to the well.
When do you want these, Mike?
Monday.
This thing was promised, so I don't know about Monday, but...
Well, Monday, Monday we're doing the interviews, I mean, we don't have to have them before the interviews, we could...
Certainly before the next meeting.
Yeah, definitely before the next zoning meeting, though.
Because I assume we're going to, the committee will give a summary of the interviews, so it'd be helpful if we had it before that, so that if I can call it together and give that input to anybody.
Our next meeting is the sixteenth. So, you know, shoot to have these back to Will by like Monday the thirteenth. All right, that was all I had. Any commissioners have anything to report? Staff, anything else to report? No? Draft set up for tonight, I want you to adjourn.
Seven fifty-six.
Eight fifty.